Okay, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, December 4th, 2023. And I'd ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we meet here in the month of December, we are feeling blessed and honored that as a community, we continue to grow and have nice things happen within our town. And we are ever thankful for the highly talented police and fire departments that we have at our disposal and the great job that they do to keep it that way and to make Batavia someplace that we all can be very, very proud of. And also, while we're passing around praise, I would like to specifically note all those from our Public Works Department who have spent many hours putting together the Christmas display IAs that we have throughout the downtown area. And we even now have the South Island Tree Lit, who we had a problem with the, some of the equipment down there, they had to replace, but we got it lit, so we now have the new Peace Bridge Lit, and we now have the traditional Batavia Christmas tree on the island lit. So tonight, as we enter the holiday season in full force, we just ask for blessing upon our community and all those around us. And we ask for a special blessing to cover all the men and women from our country who were serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask that a special blessing be showered on each of them and their families. Tonight is also, we also wish for direction and understanding and vision by the members of the City Council as they vote on the items of business before us. Know in each of them, in their hearts and minds, they are here to do whatever is ever necessary for the best interests of Batavia. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Alderman Beck, would you like to read us the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Ask the City Kirk to please call the roll.
Vacancy in Ward Seven. Lancy?
Here.
Thank you. Beck?
Here.
Peeper?
Here.
Chanset?
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger. Ten present, three absent, one vacant.
So with ten, we have the necessary quorum to conduct business, so we'll be able to move forward and do everything we need to do. And some of the other ones that are missing may straddle in, some of them sometimes get a little bit delayed. Moving to item four, as the mayor, it's my duty to remind anyone who's going to address the City Council tonight to please come forward and use the podium, and the microphone will be on, and to please use the mic, because this is being recorded for television, and without that mic, it's hard for people to understand what's going on, so please feel free to do that. Moving to item five on our agenda, items to be removed, added or changed on the agenda, does anybody on the City Council have anything they wish to talk about? Very good. The next one is item six, and that is an oath of office to Robin Bazara, who is going to be our new Seventh Ward Alderman. And Robin, if you would join me up here in the center of the room. Where's your hand? Oh, she already had a sign. I'll show you, you get to stand in a certain location.
Lori, Lori, can you grab him a mic? Microphone? Thank you.
So let me just say that I'm very honored to have Robin join the ranks of the City Council. She's been with us for a couple of years on the Historic Preservation Commission and has done an excellent job. In fact, she was slated to become the new chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission, and then you folks selected her in the interviews last week to be the new Alderman. So that kind of sidetracked her from that, but I think we'll get some very necessary and honorable service from her in the days ahead. So if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Robin Barazza.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
To the office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
Of the office of Seventh Ward Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, welcome. Can I give you the mic back?
Alderman Chanset let me know that he wants to join the meeting via Zoom, so I'm trying to get him connected at this point.
Record effect, Alderman Sulfah has arrived, and Chanset's going to be arriving or is on? So that takes us to twelve, then of fourteen.
Thirteen.
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 Oh, and we have our new one.
Alderman Chanset? Can you hear us?
I can.
Okay.
All right. Moving then is item number seven, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chanset, or can you do that for us?
Indeed, just a moment. There we go.
Go ahead.
Your Honors, your honor, the consent agenda, please just follows. Approvals, the November 24th, 2023 payroll, in the amount of $1,501.35. The accounts payable check register, in the amount of $4,169,697.01. City Council minutes for November 20th, 2023. Resolution 23-132-R, authorizing adoption of the ADA Transition Plan. Ordinance 23-62, regarding the Paid Leave for All Workers Act.
Aye.
Resolution 23-134-R, authorization for network switch purchase.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Resolution 23-131-R, authorization to contract for collection services.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item number eight, as matters from the public for items that are not on
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
the agenda, and I'm told we have somebody in the audience I know wants, would you come Moved by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Sulfah, for the approval of the consent up and introduce yourself, please, and give us your message? agendas presented. Alderman Malay, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment.
Good evening, my name is Kathy Evangelista, and I am the Director of Batavia United Way.
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here last at the committee, the whole, but I did watch online.
I just wanted to give you a quick update on what's going on with Batavia United Way.
The one ordinance, while I am going to support it, I just wanted to make a comment regarding
We have our Adopt a Family program that is happening in conjunction with Batavia Public
the Paid Leave for All Workers Act, the ordinance to exempt the city.
Schools, and we are adopting over 150 families, which is somewhere in the range of about
I would like to point out that the ambulance, ambulances will not be part of that, so the paramedics could technically, are concerned that the, that the police or the firefighters
335 kids in Batavia Public Schools to, and then this is a community effort, so we are
could all take it at the same time, that can happen with our current situation with Tri-City,
adopting those out to different businesses, families, book clubs, and so forth, all throughout
because they are not part of, they're not city employees.
Batavia. And this event is happening next week, so I just wanted to make you all aware that we
So I just wanted to make that comment, so everyone could hear that.
Anybody else?
are having this happen next week.
Any comments from anybody else?
We also have another program that we are announcing, hopefully by the end of this
I guess we call the roll, then?
week, it's called Snow Angels. It is our volunteer snow shoveling program that we are going to be running here in Batavia.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
So any individual who has a physical disability, who is a senior citizen, who is a veteran,
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
that can't afford to have their snow shoveled, can sign up for this, and we are going to
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger absent. Barazza?
be looking for volunteers to also sign up, and we're going to be trying to match volunteers to residents to make sure that their driveways are cleared. So that is hopefully going to be rolling out at the end of this week. So I just wanted to inform you that we're hopefully going to be reaching out to the city, looking for volunteers, and I just want to know if anybody has any questions.
Kathy, since you're up, you might as well say like the website, or how they can contact you, phone numbers.
Sure. The website's going to be on batavianitedway.org/snowangels. The website is not live yet, that's what we're working on, that should be by the end of the week. You can follow us on social media, and we'll also be out, announced on our website, and I'm sure through newsletters and that sort of thing. Anything else?
Anybody else? I just want to say, Batavia United Way really has been at the forefront of goodness in Batavia for a number of years, and I think, you know, you're kind of renewing the whole idea and putting it up in an even greater and grander fashion, so I take my hat off and salute you for the great job that's being done, and what is now kind of coming together with other things that we're doing in this community to help people who are less fortunate, or, you know, disabilities, or something, and whatever. We're here to be a very helpful community, and you guys are at the, one of the big movers and shakers in that particular venture, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you. It's, it's easy to do in a community such as this, that has a huge, huge community of givers, so I'm very, we're very blessed to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that Alderman Vogelsinger has just arrived, and the fire department's about to go out the door. All right. The next, we're honored to swear in two probationary police officers, and Chief, you want to come up and, want to do them one at a time, or?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about the gentleman.
Hi, good evening, Council. This is Officer Gary Michaels, standing here, am I right? He is a certified law enforcement officer who joined our department just today, today was his first day this morning. So Officer Michaels has approximately 10 years of law enforcement experience, having served in a part-time capacity with the Hinckley Police Department, and a full-time capacity with the Sandwich Police Department. He's a lifelong resident of the area and a graduate of Aurora Central Catholic High School. While at Sandwich Police Department, Officer Michaels has learned many investigative skills and has assisted on many criminal investigations. Officer Michaels will currently be assigned to our field training program, and I'm very excited to have Gary join our team, I think he's going to bring a great deal of experience with him, and I think he's going to make an immediate impact to our department.
I need to have you come up here and stand about where you saw the new Alderman being sworn in, so we've got to get your picture on the, on the newspaper, or on the TV, and could you raise your hand and repeat after me, and I state your name?
Aye, Gary Michaels.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of probationary police officer.
To the position of probationary police officer.
On December 4th, 2023.
On December 4th, 2023.
With the Batavia Police Department.
With the Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of probationary police officer.
Of probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, welcome.
First, I'd like to apologize to Alexander, because I apparently put his name on the consent agenda as Andrew, so. This is Andrew Bueller, he is a certified law enforcement officer who joined our department also this morning. Officer Bueller has over four years of law enforcement experience, serving in a full-time capacity with Rockford Police Department. He was born and raised in the Sterling, Illinois area, and is a graduate of Newman Central Catholic. Officer Bueller also attended and graduated from Western Illinois University with a Bachelor of Science degree in Law Enforcement and Justice Administration. Officer Bueller comes from a family with a history of law enforcement service. His father retired from the law enforcement profession, having served with the sheriff's office in Western Illinois. Officer Bueller is also currently assigned to our Field Training Division, and likewise, we're excited to have Alex join the team, and looking forward to all of the experience that he brings from Rockford here to Batavia.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
Aye, Alex Bueller.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the, to the position of probationary police officer.
To the position of probationary police officer.
On December 4th, 2023.
On December 4th, 2023.
With the Batavia Police Department.
With the Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of probationary police officer.
Of probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, welcome.
First, I'd like to apologize to Alexander, because I apparently put his name on the consent agenda as Andrew, so. This is Andrew Bueller, he is a certified law enforcement officer who joined our department also this morning. Officer Bueller has over four years of law enforcement experience, serving in a full-time capacity with Rockford Police Department. He was born and raised in the Sterling, Illinois area, and is a graduate of Newman Central Catholic. Officer Bueller also attended and graduated from Western Illinois University with a Bachelor of Science degree in Law Enforcement and Justice Administration. Officer Bueller comes from a family with a history of law enforcement service. His father retired from the law enforcement profession, having served with the sheriff's office in Western Illinois. Officer Bueller is also currently assigned to our Field Training Division, and likewise, we're excited to have Alex join the team, and looking forward to all of the experience that he brings from Rockford here to Batavia.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
Aye, Alex Bueller.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the, to the position of probationary police officer.
To the position of probationary police officer.
On December 4th, 2023.
On December 4th, 2023.
With the Batavia Police Department.
With the Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of probationary police officer.
Of probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, welcome. All right, item number 11 is, is the appointment of Robert Keefhafer, Keefhafer, to the Batavia Plant Commission for a three-year term. As you all got a memo, he was participant in the interview process for Alderman of the Seventh Ward, and obviously, he didn't get it, but he's got a pretty broad background in things, and I was very impressed with some of the stuff that he had to offer, and one of the things I really liked was, is he lives far west of Randall Road, in the really growing area of Batavia at the moment, which, other than Alderman Vogelsinger, we don't have anybody else from that area in the government here, so I think it's going to be good to get somebody from the Plant Commission, because there's a lot of Plant Commission conversations going to be going on in that area. So that's why I asked him if he would be willing to serve, and he said he would, so I would make that appointment, and I'd ask for a motion of confirmation.
Oh, moved.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Sulfah, any discussion? Kirk, call the roll. Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanset?
Any out there?
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no, no, none absent.
Very good, thank you. All right, moving to item 12, then, as we have a conversation again tonight with Brittany Bailey Cole, who is here to talk to us about the latest developments on the Batavia Interfaith toy drive that we've got. And I might note that this whole toy drive started in 1950, so this is the 73rd year, and for about the last, what, 20 years, Brittany's family, starting with her grandmother, has been knee-deep in this thing, and has really kept it rolling and going, and we've come a long way from the days of 1950, when the toy drive was started by people bringing broken toys down to the Batavia Fire Station, and the one fireman on duty at that point in time in Batavia would spend his days in December repairing bicycles and dolls and broken trucks and whatever, and the ladies at the American Legion and VFW auxiliaries would come down and look at the dolls, and then they would make clothing for the dolls. And so it was all a total volunteer effort of everybody doing stuff, and here we are, 73 years later, and we're still doing it, and can you share with us the numbers that you think you're going to have?
Yeah, so right now, we have over 400 kids. My parents have still been picking up the forms that the people fill out. It's set up like a big target pickup line, everybody's numbered, we have sheets that say what the kids want, we have different volunteers that come through, and now that we have almost everything set up, we're still short on teens. Of the 400 kids that we have, about a quarter of those are teens, so we're still working on getting different things for teens put together, but starting hopefully Wednesday night, we'll start shopping for those families, it'll be put into big bags that were donated by Groot, and then as the people pull up, their IDs will be checked, they'll check in, somebody will call back a number, and then we have the football team that helps us out, and they will carry those bags out and put them into the people's cars. So if you drive past Sam's on Sunday, it will just look like a huge line of cars, with bags being put in the cars, as opposed to when we used to do it, where the, the families would come and shop, we found that this is an easy way for the families, they get most of the things that they still want, and it saves them some time as well, so. I'd like to thank you guys for all of your donations, we really appreciate it. Like the mayor said, this is all donation-based, so if, everything that we get is, is from the community, so we appreciate what you guys do for us, we appreciate the community. I also want to take a quick minute to thank our different places where people can drop stuff off, the fire stations, the police station, Gammon Coach House, Daddy O's, the library, and the schools, and then a special shout-out to Riverside Pizza and Imagine Theaters, who have donated different things to us this year as well, so Sunday's our big day, so as soon as we leave here, we're going to head back up to Sam's and get some more work in for the night, and then head home, so if you guys have any questions?
Yeah, one of the things I think we should make note of is, is that to get toys, you have to be kind of pre-approved, in other words, you've looked at where these people live and.
Correct.
Their circumstances and whatever, so we know we're giving it to people who desperately need it. The other point I would like to make is, is that this has become now an annual event for three Batavia police officers in full uniform, go to the Sam's Club, and stand there the entire time, and check IDs of all these cars that are coming in, because inevitably, we've got people from outside of Batavia that hear about what a good deal this is, and they come in and want to see if they can talk us out of some toys or whatever, and you'd love to give it to them, but I mean, we, we got to take care of our own here, and we, but if we didn't have, and I think because we got three guys in uniform there, it kind of scares away some of them that would want to go further into the process, so, and it seems like the same guys volunteer every year, I already talked to one this afternoon, who was telling me he's all set to go, and there's a lady that was a longtime receiver of this, and now she's a, I guess, a volunteer, but she started a tradition 20 years ago, that Deputy Chief Johnson and myself would stand with her and have her picture taken. So this woman, I think, has about 20 pictures, year after year, the Deputy Chief and myself, so it's that kind of Bataviism that are out there that really, I think, speak well for this, but I feel really good about this, because this really is Batavia stepping up and taking care of its own. And I thank the Bailey family and all those working with you from the bottom of my heart for all that you've done and will do in the next couple, few days to get this thing going and done with, so another excellent job. And your, your grandmother, Mildred, was somebody who I knew very, very well, and I'm sure she's smiling down from the heaven above about you being here tonight and doing what she started and what she taught you, so you're following in great footsteps here, so.
And we do invite anybody from the Council that wants to come down, if you see a car parked in front of the Sam's, come knock on the door, and we'll let you kind of see what, what's happening, so, thank you guys again.
Thank you. Okay, item 13 is the approval of a Class D liquor license application for Leo Dan Two Corporation, doing business as Taco Dale at 842 North Randall Road. Chief, you want to do this one?
Yep, I get it. Good evening again. The Batavia Police Department completed a background check and investigation to determine whether Taco Dale, to be located at 842 North Randall Road, and the owner and president, Idala Rodriguez, and the manager, Yolanda Villa, might be suitable to receive a liquor license in the city of Batavia. They've submitted all of the required documents, and we have found no issues whatsoever at this point, and would recommend the issuance of the Class D1 restaurant, which is all alcohol, to be issued to Taco Dale. If anybody has any questions? I don't know, do we have anybody here tonight?
This is the one that's right down the shopping center from San, or?
Trader Joe's.
Correct, yeah, this is, this is right where Smash Burger used to be located.
Smash Burger started out there.
Right on that corner unit.
And when she came and talked to me, she, she's already got three or four existing restaurants of this same type, I know one's in Romeoville and a couple other places, so.
I think Aurora, Bowling Brook.
Yeah, okay. And Romeoville, I think. And so it's a pretty highly, I've talked to a couple of the mayors in those towns, and everybody speaks very highly of this, so they think this is a very popular restaurant for Batavia to take on. Any further discussion? Now, entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sulfah, second by Wolf, for the approval of the Class D1 liquor license application for Leo Dan Corporation, doing business as Taco Dale. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Fourteen yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to 14, is our friends from the Chamber of Commerce, and our president and CEO of that organization is here, so.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone, thank you for having me tonight.
It's December already, I can't believe it. It has been a busy year for the Chamber. Looking back, the Chamber is very proud of our successful initiatives this year. As you know, our Grow Your Business Scholarship has been a big success, providing $20,000 of business advising to four businesses: Boji Bikes, Garage 31, Black Cactus, and my guest this evening, Hearth and Hammer. We're pleased that our countless networking events and educational events have provided connections, skills, opportunities for businesses to prosper. We've also supported the residents in our community with many programs. We're very happy to have granted four scholarships to the Batavia High School seniors, and we will donate $4,000 again next year. We are sadly and happily announcing that we have sold out of Chamber bucks already this year, record, record timing. We sold out 5,000 subsidized by the Chamber and 5,000 regular Chamber bucks to the community, so that's $10,000 going into our local economy. We are now, also I'm announcing, we're offering a trip to Italy. In October of 2024, we're going to have a trip to Pompeii and the Amalfi Coast. So we're coordinating this tomorrow night. We are having a Zoom meeting to get more information. It is very inexpensive for the trip that everything includes, so, I'm sorry, the Zoom is Wednesday, December 6th. If you would like to put this as a stocking stuffer in your own stockings or somebody else's, please join us. The meeting's from 6 o'clock to probably 7 o'clock on Zoom, so you'll be able to get your questions answered. It'll be a great trip. I want to extend a warm welcome to the businesses that joined the Chamber this past month. We're delighted to have Parkside Skincare, Kid Strong Batavia, The Magical Traveling Pet Groomer, Ray of Sunshine Music, and JT's Tavern and Tap as part of our growing Chamber community. I want to give a shout-out to Jenny Zelke from Illuminate Space in the Wilson Street Mercantile. The Illinois Office of Tourism has an Illinois Made Award program that aims to showcase Illinois businesses, artists, and craftspeople who can create a unique, memorable experience for visitors, allowing them to see and feel the authentic local flavor of a place. We're delighted to congratulate Jenny Zelke from Illuminate Space for being honored for helping craft Illinois by hand. Both Kathy Evangelista from Batavia United Way and Brittany Cole from the Toy Access Drive will be part of our Batavia Women in Business Luncheon coming up, our holiday luncheon on Tuesday, December 12th. The Chamber collects items and funds for the Toy Access Drive and Batavia United Ways Adopt a Family. If you would like to contribute, I know you already brought some today, but we collect gift cards and unwrap toys and give them to the organizations, and gift cards as well. We typically have a $1,000 donation to each organization, and the firemen are kind enough to come and pick up all the toys and deliver them to the organization. So thank you for that. Other, so join us at that. It's a fun holiday event. A lot of businesses bring all their employees and celebrate as a holiday festive event while they're helping people in need in our community. On Wednesday, December 6th, we have our Not For Profit Forum. On Wednesday, December 6th, the Not For Profit Forum's at ADM. At 11:30 same day, we have our Employment Law Update webinar. On Wednesday, December 6th at evening, that's our Italia, Italy Trip Planning webinar. The holiday luncheon I mentioned is Tuesday, December 12th. We have a networking event in the evening at Kay Hollis Jewelers on Wednesday, December 13th at 4:30. And we have a webinar on Paid Leave for All Workers Act. I know you guys have all been talking about it, but a lot of businesses still have questions, so we'll have a webinar on that on Tuesday, December 19th at 11:30. Any questions before I introduce my guest?
Questions?
All right, thank you. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce Annie Scholl from Hearth and Hammer. Not only has she won a Chamber Grow Your Business Scholarship, as I mentioned, she also won an Illinois Made program from the state of Illinois. So Hearth and Hammer is located at 161st Street in Batavia, and is a literary candle studio and general store. Come on up, Annie, and you can tell us about your wonderful business.
Hi, how's it going? I am Annie Scholl. I'm one of the owners of Hearth and Hammer. We're a literary candle studio and general store here in Batavia. We opened our original location in 2019 at 319 Main Street. And this past July, we moved into a new location at 161st Street, right next to Kiss the Sky and Water Street Studios. It was the former home of the US Wind and Engine Pump Co., so we feel very at home being in a windmill factory here in Batavia. So many folks come in and they comment about how high the ceilings are and how beautiful the building is, so we're really excited that we were able to open that back up to the community. I just wanted to say, you know, we're really grateful to be here in Batavia, both my husband and I, who own the business, grew up here. And we have a joke that it's kind of like Batavia has like a two-degree of separation between people. It's highly likely that if you don't know the person in front of you, you probably know someone that they know. And that's definitely the case when folks are coming into Hearth and Hammer. So it's been really fun and illuminating to meet so many people, including, you know, teachers and librarians of my daughter at school that I didn't know were customers already, and things like that. But yeah, we love having our business here. I think there's a really vibrant shop-local attitude in our town that really, you know, certainly helped carry us through COVID and a lot of businesses in town. You know, when that happened, I remember thinking like, what is this town going to look like after this? And, you know, really, most of the businesses survived and are still here. So it's really a testament to, you know, the people in this town, and that they really do vote with their wallet, and they like to see small, local businesses thrive. On our end, we carry, for those that don't know about us, we carry a little bit about everything. We make our candles in our studio. We have jewelry, pantry goods, a line called Batavia Made that is inspired by the history and heritage of Batavia that my husband designs. We have greeting cards, kids' goods, so really, you know, you name it, it's kind of there. You can find more information about us at hearthenhammer.co, or come visit us at 161st Street. We're open Tuesday through Sunday from 11 to 5. And yeah, I think that's it on my end, if you all have any questions.
You have any questions?
Let's make a remark that Annie's also a recent new member on the Main Street Board, so she's jumped right in there also. And I've told Annie this, but it's one of the shops in downtown Batavia that my kids will jump at if I say I'm going to Hearth and Hammer, and they immediately want to come. And they always feel so inspired when they go into your shop. So it's a beautiful, beautiful space. If you haven't been, you need to go.
I was just going to say, I went in there, and the setup that you have for smelling your candles is like absolutely, it's wonderful to just pick up the glass. I worry that I'm going to break it, but I love being able to do that, go in and smell the different scents that you have. There's, how many do you have?
That's a great question. Maybe like 20?
I was just going through and picking it up and smelling it, so it's great.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, I just got a couple comments I'd like to make. Number one, last week, I got a call here from a lady that lived down in Evergreen Park. And she had straddled into Batavia for whatever reason, and she had gone into any shop here. And she was just blown away with all the things that were being offered and how it was. And she called me up and wanted to know, did you have another shop, any place in the region that would be closer to Evergreen Park? And I said, well, not yet, maybe someday. But, so you've already got people admiring what you're doing and your creativity. And she says, it was a store, one of the few places I've ever been into that I think all this stuff was made right there. It's a homemade store, and by the way, is it a great idea? So you've got something very, very special on your hands, and we thank you for being Batavians and staying in the community. I might note that your building that you're in was one of the principal assembly lines for the US Wind Engine and Pump Company. And probably during their life there, which was back in the 1800s through about 1940, there was probably, in your space, hundreds of thousands of components of windmills made. And then they would load them all on the railroad tracks, we're right there along Water Street, and haul them away. But that building you're in really has quite an illustrious history to it. And I've had windmill enthusiasts come in here wanting to know where that, we had three factories. The other two are mostly gone, but yours is still, a lot of it's still over there. And so people like to see that, so don't be surprised if somebody doesn't come in and say, gee, what's the story of the windmills here? Because it was a place where literally hundreds of thousands over the years they were there were probably made. The final thing I'd offer up, if you want to know more about this, her father is the unofficial ambassador over at McDonald's Restaurant every morning from about 9 till about 11:00. And he meets and greets everybody and tells them about where to find his daughter's store. And he's quite a salesman for your business, so everybody at McDonald's knows all about you.
It's true. He makes it like one degree of separation, just on his own. Yeah.
Anybody else? Well, thank you, and thank you for opening your business in Batavia. You've made us a special destination for a lot of people, so I'm very pleased to see you there, and we hope you stay there for many, many years, if not generations, to come.
Me too. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, moving then to 15, which is Ordinance 2363, an ordinance authorizing, providing for the issuance of not to exceed $38 million of sewage revenue bonds, I E P A of the city of Batavia, Kane, and DuPage Counties, Illinois, for the purpose of paying for the costs of necessary improvements to the sewage system of the city. Prescribing all the details of said bonds and providing for the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of said system for the payment of said bonds. Laura, you want to make some comments?
I think that Peggy provided you with information about this step in the process toward issuance of the bonds that will pay for the next phase, Phase 2A, of the upgrade to the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant. And also, we had Jerry Ruth here from Trotter, who went through all of the different aspects of that project. So we just need to pass the bond ordinance as one more step toward the, getting the bonds in place.
Do we need a motion then for Ordinance 2363?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Malay. Any further discussion? You know, I've had a number of people ask me the last couple of weeks, what's really happening at this sewer plant? Where's all this money being spent? And one of the things I think, and people readily understand this, the existing sewer plant that's been there for a number of years, the pipes going into it were awful small. And they were built when Batavia was probably a third of the population than it is now. So one of the things you are now seeing is, if you ever drive down Water Street, is that we're putting big pipes now to be able to take all the water that's coming to us now and will continue to increase in the future, that we'll be able to take care of that and not start backing this system up into the residential neighborhoods, because we can't treat it fast enough. So you're seeing these big, big pipes now being buried along Water Street, and it'll be going down into the plant. And that's one of the things we're paying for with some of this money, so that's a good thing. But I mean, this is probably something that the community will get 80 to 100 years' use out of those pipes in the ground. And I mean, they've, our staff has really studied it very strongly to make sure they're big enough and will be able to handle the loads of water that will be coming at them with all the things that are happening. Because as you all know, we've got quite a bit of development now on our doorstep wanting to come into Batavia, and we just got to be able to show the world that we got the ability to handle it, and I think we do. I have been told that the existing plant, that we've, the new one we've just opened in the last couple of years, I've been told by representatives of the state that ours is probably one of the very best treatment plants in the entire state of Illinois. And on the Fox River, of all the discharge that affluents are coming to, there's over 100 places from Wisconsin down to Ottawa that discharge their sewer water into the Fox River. And there's several people told me they think Batavia's is the cleanest, with the equipment and the know-how that we've got in the staff down there, that we've really put ourselves at a high level, to the degree that I've had several neighboring cities ask me if it would be possible for them to bring the mayor and the staff and the city council over to tour the Batavia plant. So we'll see if that begins to happen. But I've been contacted by several that say, we hear nice things about this Batavia sewer system. So, you know, sewer system's not something that you think much about, or, you know, you don't think you pat yourself on the back for it, but we really have done a nice job here. And I got to give Laura and her staff a lot of credit for getting the right people in there and really putting this thing together with people who know how to do it and how, where to do it at, and the whole bit, so we're very fortunate. So with that being said, any further discussion? I asked the clerk to call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
All right, thank you. All right, moving, keeping Laura in her same spot.
Yep.
We're moving to item 16, which is Resolution 23123-R, the 2024 annual budget. And I know this group has spent a lot of time discussing it over the last few weeks. Anybody have any questions before we entertain a motion?
I'd just like to make a statement. I think that the staff that we have hired, all the department heads, all, everybody that has input into this, and especially our finance department, that puts this together that makes it easy to understand, easy to find things in, and very transparent for our public. I think it's something that just has to be said every year, that this gets better every year. As long as I've been on the council, I remember going through a giant stack of every line by line, which I'm glad that none of us have to go through that anymore. And you can put as much time as you want into it to study it, and it's very easy to find whatever you like. Jen's done it several times during the meeting, to find a number that we were looking for for a budget item or something. Just having that available to us, I think, is a really big statement to the public, that we want them to have just that kind of access that we have to it. And none of this is done behind closed doors. It's all out in the open, and we try to have as much input as we can into it. And every year, we have very few people, if any, ever show up to our budget hearings. That's always been a frustration of mine, that we don't have more input until after the budget's passed, and somebody looks at it and says, wow, they changed this, or they raised this, or they raised that. And then we get yelled at because we didn't tell anybody about it, but we talk about it, you know, for two months before we end up passing this. So I think it's something that just needs to have a little bit of airtime, that people need to know that everything that we do down here is in that budget, and it's all out in the open for anybody to see. So that's my statement for that.
Thank you. Anybody else? With that being the case, I'd ask for Kirk to call the roll.
I'll make a motion first.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Move by Alderman Wolf, second by Solfa. Who?
Malay.
Malay, okay.
I don't know, yeah. I can't remember how it happened.
I go from that side. Can't hear it right here.
We have a motion and second for Resolution 23123-R.
Wolf?
Aye.
Solfa?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Very good. I just want to make the comment that if you compare our budget against many of those that surround us, we may be the lowest. I don't want to start naming names of any other towns or any other amount, but this one, I believe, comes out at 72 cents, doesn't it? And there aren't many around that are that low anymore. We were higher. I remember the first year I was elected mayor in 1981, the budget was, the tax rate was $1.05. And so we've come a long way, but we've had a lot of nice things happen, specifically all the growth and all the growth of the industrial park, Randall Road Shopping Center, the sales tax. A lot of stuff really came together that really helped us take the budget down, not up, so we should be very proud of that fact. All right, moving to item 17, which is Ordinance 23-52, the 2023 tax levy. Who's got this one?
Ian would actually have that.
Again, this is, as Peggy said in previous meetings, this is just the levy associated with the budget, to support this year's budget.
Not really much to talk about. It's pretty simple in understanding.
Right. We provided the required black box notices due to the increase, but the increase was due to capturing the additional increments in EAV that we experienced just in one year. So that being higher than 5% required us to give those proper notices. And so now this would be approving that levy.
Any questions? Kirk, call the roll.
I'll make the motion.
You guys are confusing me here.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Janzen?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
All right, moving right along then to 18, which is ordinance 2353, SSA number 30 tax levy. Laura, can you explain?
Yes, this is SSA 30. And let me just bring it up. And this one is for the stormwater detention area.
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2353, SSA 30 tax levy.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Sulfah for the approval of ordinance 2353, SSA 30. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Janzen?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Very good. Motion's approved. Moving to 19, ordinance 2354, SSA number 42 tax levy. Laura, can you explain?
Yes, this is also stormwater detention area. Area number 42.
Make the motion that we approve ordinance 2354, SSA number 42 tax levy.
Second. Moved by Wolf, second by Sulfah for the approval of ordinance 2354 for SSA 42 tax levy. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Janzen?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Very good. I just want to make the comment that if you compare our budget against many of those that surround us, we may be the lowest. I don't want to start naming names of any other towns or any other amounts, but this one, I believe, comes out at 72 cents, doesn't it? And there aren't many around that are that low anymore. We were higher. I remember the first year I was elected mayor in 1981, the budget was, the tax rate was $1.05. And so, we've come a long way, but we've had a lot of nice things happen, specifically all the growth and all the growth of the industrial park, Randall Road Shopping Center, the sales tax. A lot of stuff really came together that really helped us take the budget down, not up. So, we should be very proud of that fact. All right, moving to item 17, which is ordinance 23-52, the 2023 tax levy. Who's got this one?
Ian would actually have that. If he wants to say anything.
Again, this is, as Peggy said in previous meetings, this is just the levy associated with the budget to support this year's budget.
Not really much to talk about. It's pretty simple in understanding.
Right. We provided the required black box notices due to the increase. But, the increase was due to capturing the additional increments in EAV that we experienced just in one year. So, that being higher than 5% required us to give those proper notices. And so, now this would be approving that levy.
Other questions? Kirk, call the roll.
I'll make the motion.
Second. You guys are confusing me here. Okay, moved by Wolf, second by Sulfah for the approval of ordinance 2352. Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Janzen?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Very good. Motion's approved. Moving to 19, ordinance 2354, SSA number 42 tax levy. Laura, can you explain?
Yes, this is SSA 30. And let me just bring it up. And this one is for the stormwater detention area.
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2353, SSA 30 tax levy.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Sulfah for the approval of ordinance 2353, SSA 30. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Janzen?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
And moving to 20, which is ordinance 2355, SSA 62 tax levy.
And this is our SSA for the Main Street program.
This is the downtown area that businesses and landowners downtown that generate money that we use to help fund Main Street.
And this is half of what we fund Main Street at $80,000 every year. So, 40 comes from the SSA, and then another 40 comes from the TIF one.
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2355, SSA 62 tax levy.
By Wolf, second by Sulfah for the approval of ordinance 2355, SSA 62. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Janzen?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Very good. Motion's approved. Moving to 19, ordinance 2354, SSA number 42 tax levy. Laura, can you explain?
Yes, this is also stormwater detention area. Area number 42.
Make the motion that we approve ordinance 2354, SSA number 42 tax levy.
Second. Moved by Wolf, second by Sulfah for the approval of ordinance 2354 for SSA 42 tax levy. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Janzen?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Very good. Motion's approved. Moving to 19, ordinance 2354, SSA number 42 tax levy. Laura, can you explain?
Yes, this is also stormwater detention area. Area number 42.
Make the motion that we approve ordinance 2354, SSA number 42 tax levy.
Second. Moved by Wolf, second by Sulfah for the approval of ordinance 2353, SSA 62. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Janzen?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Very good. Motion's approved. Moving to 19, ordinance 2354, SSA number 42 tax levy. Laura, can you explain?
Yes, this is SSA 30. And let me just bring it up. And this one is for the stormwater detention area.
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2353, SSA 30 tax levy.
All right, moving right along then to 18, which is ordinance 2353, SSA number 30 tax levy. Laura, can you explain?
Yes, this is SSA 30. And let me just bring it up. And this one is for the stormwater detention area.
I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2353, SSA 30 tax levy.
All right, moving to 20, which is ordinance 2355, SSA 62 tax levy. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Janzen?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Very good. Motion's approved. Moving to 19, ordinance 2354, SSA number 42 tax levy. Laura, can you explain?
Yes, this is also stormwater detention area. Area number 42.
Make the motion that we approve ordinance 2354, SSA number 42 tax levy. Second.
Moved by Wolf, second by Sulfah for the approval of ordinance 2353, SSA 30. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Janzen?
Aye.
14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Very good. Motion's approved. Moving to 19, ordinance 2354, SSA number 42 tax levy. Laura, can you explain?
Yes, this is also stormwater detention area. Area number 42.
Make the motion that we approve ordinance 2354, SSA number 42 tax levy.
Second. Moved by Wolf, second by Sulfah for the approval of ordinance 2353, SSA 30. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
of these retail guys come in and they, they think they want to be in the area here because we got this opportunity for more growth, so.
Your Honor, if I could, one of the things I thought was interesting about looking at, I read through everything for the Plan Commission, and one of the things that this company that's proposing this development at the Sam's Club does is hotels. And that piece to the north to be filled in and turned into a pad for a hotel, I think, is a very interesting prospect. And, you know, we'll see when they get to us what their answer is to me when I bring that up to them. Because I think that that's a very viable thing along Randall Road, and with all the hotels and retirement community space that we have in town, that another hotel would be a great thing in an area where everything could almost be in walking distance from it.
And I appreciate you bringing all that up, because I think we are really, as a community, we're really in a historic moment here of positive changes, of things that are going to be good for this town for future generations to enjoy. And if we handle that development out there the right way, I think we can really kind of bring some really neat stuff into town. And so this is an exciting moment for us. Anybody else have any questions, Laura, tonight?
Thank you. Yes.
I wanted to note that I noticed that the new crosswalks have been unveiled at North River Street and Wilson.
Yes.
So that's, that's, that cleared the process finally?
Yes.
Very good.
Mm-hmm. And there was an issue with the timing of those lights, because until the crossing signals had been reviewed and approved by IDOT, they were on an automatic cycle phase. So in other words, they were always showing crossing because the buttons weren't actuating it. Now it should get back to normal, expected. Good eye.
Yay.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Do we have other business from the council?
I had one opportunity that I wanted to share with folks, if anybody is interested in doing some citizen science work. There is a program of Illinois River Watchers Network doing a winter chloride watchers citizen science project, where you can sign up to collect river samples or stream samples once a month for the next six months, just to test the chloride level. And there's a, there's a whole system, there's a whole training. The last, the last of the trainings is Wednesday night, and it's done virtually. And you get your own little kit of test strips and vials, and you go to your site once a month to see how much salt is in our waters, because that's one of the major contaminants and pollutants that's harming our waterways. So it's kind of cool. Me and my kids are going to be going out once a month over the next couple of months to test our water, and I'll report back any data. But they're hoping to get this broad swath, so it's all over northeastern Illinois, all of the rivers and streams are eligible, and they want just this wide variety from across. After snow events is great, right before snow events is great, just to get different conditions throughout the season. So if you have any questions, let me know. It's at the Conservation Foundation's website is where you sign up. We're coordinating the actual program for this area.
That's very good. Appreciate that. Anybody else?
Well, it's any rivers and stream. You have to get permission from, you know, the property.
Well, I'd like to end tonight's meeting by just giving you about a two-minute history story about Batavia, about something that's going to be commemorated three days from now, and that's the Japanese attack on Pearl Harbor. It was 82 years ago, this week. So in the 1940s, Batavia had a chief of police in town by the name of John D. Abarowski. And he was originally born in Austria, and he had, so I don't remember him, I was not born for many years after he died, but he was very beloved by people, and he had this Australian accent, and everybody liked that. And he kept the peace here pretty good. And he had a son that was born here and went to Batavia High School. And in May of 1940, John D. lived out on East Wilson Street, and he was going home to eat. And somebody came flying by him in a car, and he began a pursuit of this guy, a high-speed pursuit out East Wilson Street. And they got out, almost McChesney Road, which is now Fermilab territory, and something happened to John's squad car, and he lost control, but went into a tree and was killed. So we lost our police chief in May of 1940. So the following month or so, he had a son by the name of Francis. And Francis graduated from Batavia High School that year, and immediately he joined the US Navy and went off to be a Navy person. And so we are told, on December 7th, 1941, when we had the Pearl Harbor attack, Francis Abarowski was aboard the USS Arizona when it was hit and destroyed and blew up and the whole thing sank. And there were 1,177 sailors on that ship that day, and they all died. And they're all, and their bodies apparently are still down in the USS Arizona. I've had the opportunity to go to Pearl Harbor and get on a little boat and go out to the Arizona site, and they have a nice monument, not real big, but it's out there. And on the monument, they have a list by alphabetical order of all 1,177 sailors that are on, were killed that day and are still down in the boat below us. And because the name in Batavia was spelled A-L-B, Francis Abarowski is right at, almost at the top of the list of all the 1,177, because, just because of the spelling of his name. But if you're Batavian and you can go, I think he, his position may be number eight out of 1,177. But he's very easy to find, his name on that list. And I share that with you just because it, it shows, you know, how Batavia has always been there to participate in important moments of national history, and how we've always, you know, had our own set of tragedies with our police chief getting killed in a car accident that year. And it shows how we had young men of this town, before the war started, decided they wanted to get into the military and go off, and this is what happened to this young gentleman when he got killed. So he died in 1940, or Fran, his father died in 1940, and Francis died in 41. So the family really had a terrible hit. If you go out over on the west side of Batavia, we now have an Abarowski Street in the subdivision over there. And I've had people who live there ask me, where'd you come up with that name? And when I explain to them what it was, now they have appreciation for it now and don't mind the name being what it is. But it's kind of a strange name, but it's why it is, and it's a very interesting historical moment of Batavia, when you can have somebody that was physically on that ship when it went down, and it was a year after the father had been killed in line of duty in Batavia. So an interesting story, and one that I just wanted to share with you and everybody that's watching on TV, and many of the old timers, many of whom now have passed away, but that for many years was a very prominent story that Batavians used to share with new people moving into town and whatever have you. We had a police chief that was killed, and his son killed the following year on the USS Arizona. So we've been right there in the face of American history on more than one time, and I think we should, as Batavians, be very proud of the fact that we have such a nice, it's not a nice record, but an interesting record of historical importance that we can show as part of what our town is all about and has been for many years. So that being said, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Oh, moved.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alman Sulfah. You need to just take a voice vote.
Okay.